How do we rotate through and we'll, we'll start with, uh, who's got the, the, uh, lowest letter of the alphabet? Is that BJ? No, wait. Ben? Uh, is it, uh, Terry? Great. That works.
Woo.
All right, I'm gonna W, Terry.
Or we can let-
Pledge for us.
We can let the mayor do it to start with.
Hold our hands here. Uh, Ben, that's all right. Yeah, you're right.
Pledge leasings.
Let me go ahead and do it this time. I'll start it off, right?
Okay, go ahead.
You just, uh, lip sync it to yourself. There you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shoot, that was a lot easier.
Very good.
Thank you. All right. And since I just came in running, perfect time for a moment of silence. Uh, of course, keep the, uh, the folks in the hospital in your thoughts, whether it be COVID or from a recent accident. I hope everybody's on the mend and, uh, everybody stays safe. So now would please join me for a moment of silence. Thanks. Thank you so much. All right, jumping right in. We are looking to approve the agenda. You have it before you. Uh, any questions or comments before we go in that direction?
Oh, Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Second?
All right. Okay, we have a, uh, a motion from BJ and a second from Ivy. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, uh, I'm sorry, we'll take a quick roll call vote. We know BJ and Ivy are in. John, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
And, um, Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, and yes from the mayor. We have an agenda. I can even do this remotely. I figured it all out. Uh, the next item on our agenda is public comment where we like to do this twice, twice a meeting. Obviously, uh, Zoom makes it a little more challenging, but if you have any trouble, just, uh, raise your hand or, or get our attention and we will unmute your mic so that you can speak. We like you to keep it for three minutes unless you're representing the group, then it'd be five minutes. And obviously, uh, as, as you might be familiar, please identify yourself and let us know where you live.
Mayor, no one is raising their hand at this time. This deputy town clerk, Michael Odell.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Uh, that will come to a close, the, uh, bring to a close the public comment section of our agenda. Uh, no need to respond to your comments. So we'll go right into, uh, do we have any introductions or presentations or are we right into old business? Looks like we're jumping into old business. So we're talking about the conditional use site plan in Bermuda Bay, the, uh, land unit development section 200A. Amendment to the site plan for two and four story multi-story structures and associated site improvements. We are looking to hear a little bit more about that and hopefully take some action. Is there somebody muted or was, was there somebody who was gonna, uh, speak a little bit about that or are we just gonna move right into taking action? We heard about it at the last meeting and didn't take action because, uh, of the COVID requirements for public comment, uh, lasting 24 hours beyond the meeting. So that has expired at this point. We did get, um, a, a nice letter from the Department of Commerce and some other comments that are, will be part of the record if anybody likes to speak at them. Is there anything from the staff or are we looking for more?
And Mayor, you, you are correct. Um, the comments that have come in since the last public meeting, which would have been submitted via email or some other, uh, documented fashion, those are now part of the record and it is now, uh, and you of course can consider those in making your decisions, but it's now, uh, you have scheduled this for, uh, action. So a motion would essentially be in order.
All right, that's, that's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure there weren't, uh, anybody else that wanted to bring more information at this point. So, um, board members, uh, comments, questions, or we're looking for a motion to, to take some action?
Mayor John Winley here. I'm ready to make a motion unless anyone else would like to have further discussion.
Excellent. I'm hearing lots of crickets there. So I think you, you have to go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion of approval for a conditional use plan Bermuda Bay PUD, section 200A, amend amendment site plan to two, four story multifamily structures and associated improvements. That's it.
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Mayor Terry Gray, I'll second that.
All right, we have, have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, the remaining board members can weigh in. Uh, Ivy?
Yes.
And BJ?
Yes.
An affirmative from the mayor as well, which means that this moves forward with, uh, unanimous consent. Thank you all. The next item on the, uh, agenda here is new business. We have, um, a planning board seat that needs some attention. Uh, Mike Lowax, uh, Lowax term on the planning board expires March, uh, 2021. He has expressed a desire to be reappointed. Uh, we've got a bunch of other, um, books on file, of course, and, but we haven't received any new ones recently. So what we're looking for is a motion to, uh, appoint, um, someone, probably like Lowax to, uh, three year appointment or reappointment rather, to the planning board that would then expire on March 20, uh, March of 2024.
Mayor.
They're both rushing.
Terry Gray, so moved.
Terry Gray making a motion to-
Yes, sir.
Reappoint Mike to the, um, planning board? All right.
Yes, sir.
Mayor John Winley here. I'll second that.
We've got a second from Mr. Winley. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Uh, we will look to the consent of the remaining board members. Um, Ms. Ingram, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mr. McAvoy, how do you vote?
Yes, I think Mike does great work.
I'm a big fan of Mike as well and super excited he's willing to serve again and, and congratulations, Mike. You've just been reappointed. Yeah. All right. Not, not at my desk. Look at the hang of the door. Um, the next item on our agenda is committee reports. Have there been any committee reports since we met last? I didn't think I saw any on the calendar.
I, I, I have, uh, one, uh, when I mayor, uh, when I may mayor. Um, uh, today I, um, had a committee meeting with the, uh, street improvement, uh, committee. And we discussed, uh, what we had mentioned earlier in a previous meeting, uh, crosswalk lighting on NC 12, uh, specifically on the marked crosswalks of NC 12, where we're proposing to put, um, a, um, solar powered, uh, motion sensing lights on both sides of the crosswalk. And Cameron, um, did an excellent presentation from the planning board. Uh, he put together for us in the committee, a presentation which he sent, uh, since sent to the commissioners to look at, uh, via email this afternoon. And what the planning department proposed and what our committee approved was, uh, and, and we're asking for your consensus on is a plan that phases in the lighting for the crosswalks on NC 12. It actually could start as soon as April of this year. And he has identified, uh, Cameron went out, took photos every crosswalk and identified the primary crosswalks that, that are the darkest, of course, and also the most used. And, um, came up with that list. And it, it basically was a list of, like I said, the darkest, the most used, and then they all lead to public beach accesses in Kill Devil Hills. So, um, those crosswalks receive the priority uh, to be put in phase one. And phase one is what we're asking, uh, the board for a consensus on to go ahead and start that project. The, the monies are already, um, there to, um, to be shifted toward that expenditure. So it wouldn't require a new, um, motion or, um, or a type of budget change. Uh, the monies are in that, um, in that division to be used in that way. If you, uh, if we can reach a consensus on that being a priority. The first phase will be roughly $30,000. Cameron actually has a slide that I know he's gonna put up in this meeting, you know, for the general public, public to look at. Um, I'm not sure if he's there, if he can pop it up.
Boy, uh, Cameron right here. Um, I'd be happy to share that screen now if you'd like to, uh, to-
Yes.
Be able to elaborate on a bit. And I can answer any questions, um, that you may have of the rest of the board, May. So hang on just one moment and I'll get that on the screen.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just keep talking a little bit more in phase one and fates, in phase two. Okay, you can see there, phase one, um, those are the crosswalks that have Cameron identified and, and, and our committee agreed are the most, um, pressing as far as how dark they are. And then phase two includes a number of crosswalks, um, that actually contain businesses and they're, they're a little bit more lit, um, due to the signs and from the businesses and, and, uh, a couple of, uh, stoplights as well. So, um, and, and existing, existing streetlights that may be there. So a lot of those phase two accesses, uh, have, um, businesses at or near. And I believe none of the phase two accesses, uh, are, uh, beach accesses. All the beach access are, are contained in phase one. Um, and what we're proposing is that the local businesses that, uh, are adjacent to the phase two crosswalks, if they would like to, um, uh, help fund those, um, those lights to be done in 2001 or, you know, this, during this first phase, you know, we'd be looking for public-private partnership on those crosswalks, um, especially those with the asterisks, asterisks, which, uh, you see in phase two there. So, um, so that could bump them up to phase one in addition to those listed in phase one, if they are interested in, in helping, um, finance that. And they might be because it, I think it will be beneficial to their businesses as well. But you can see where the priority in phase one is, are all crosswalks that, uh, contain beach accesses and they're all very dark.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Yeah.
Um, Cameron right here. I just wanted to, uh, clarify that a little bit for the phase one, phase two. There, there are a, a couple, including, uh, Walker Street, Third Street, Ferris, Sutton, um, in phase two that are existing town, um, accesses or, or four-wheel drive ramps of, of that sort. However, um, they were broken into phase two based on the characteristics of the crosswalk, which could include existing lighting being the main one and also the, the volume of that crosswalk.
Okay, yes.
Phase one being the more, the most important and fell into the, the, the category of, you know, no lighting and high volume. And then phase two, most of those have a fair amount of existing lighting or they're, like you said, several of them are at a, at, at a, you know, a commercial establishment or somewhere like the Avalon Beaches, um, Association.
Correct. And, and, and Cameron did a really good job. Um, and you all have received, uh, a, a copy of that presentation in your email, going to each one of these crosswalks, um, taking photos, actually took the photos during the full moon. So, uh, he took photos. We were able to identify obviously that some of them were, um, you know, completely dark. And, um, and based on that, he presented these recommendations. And our committee also reviewed that and was in agreement, um, with these phases that, uh, planning had, uh, recommended. So, um, you know, the goal is to light all the crosswalks, of course, and that's what we'll, we will be aiming for. Also, in phase three, we'd be aiming to, um, light the crosswalks in the multi-use path on Collington Road and Veterans Drive as well as, uh, marked crosswalks in the school area, Aviation Park, and Dare County Parks and Recreation area of Kill Devil Hills. So, um, it's exciting. The product's exciting. Uh, it's basically the product that our, our neighboring towns have used. The one, there's one already came place on Eighth Street, um, right there on the next at Kill Devil Hills, uh, border. And, um, maybe Cameron would, uh, wanna speak a little more to the actual lights themselves, but, um, we're told that, you know, they have a long lasting life. Their replacement cost is not, um, also that high. The pole and the installation is the initial cost. The actual lights themselves, while the last, you know, five plus years, um, under normal conditions, uh, they're not excessive to replace either. So that's, that was encouraging. So, um, let me, let me first say, Cameron, what, what did I miss? I'm sure I missed a few things. What did I miss that I should, uh, mention?
Mr. McAvoy, you, you, you covered majority of the basis that we talked about today. Mr. Mayor and, and fellow commissioners, we did have a good meeting with the SISPC today. And I gave them a comprehensive report on exactly what Commissioner McAvoy, um, was talking about. I'm sure most of everybody has seen these, uh, this type of lighting. Um, it's already been installed in Naxxet to the south and also in some of the municipalities, uh, north of us as well. And, uh, they're, they're a good product. They're a direct burial fiberglass pole with a solar light fixture. So no need to run power to it. They're holding up in elements at the people, you know, other jurisdictions who've already installed them. Um, so yeah, they're, they're a great product and, uh, being the one to be out doing the report, it is awfully dark. And, uh, and I know my way around town. So I'm certain that our, our visitors are, it can, it's very dark and intimidating to be crossing that road. So, uh, looking forward to, you know, providing some safety and some lighting at those crosswalks. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any technical that I can clear up for you. Um, what we did lay out was trying to go ahead and get this phase one block done prior to the 2021 summer season. And then looking at phase two and then phase three in, uh, in our budget workshops coming up so that we can look into, you know, how we can get those projects done as well. Um, well, Commissioner McAvoy was referencing with the, um, the ones listed there with an, uh, an asterisk there is, uh, going ahead and writing letters to these commercial businesses that may be in the vicinity of these crosswalks and seeing if they wanna join in with us on this phase one to go ahead and get it this year. Um, but other than that, I, I think you covered it very well, Commissioner McAvoy. Let me know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. And I just wanna say, uh, Commissioner Winley was in on the meeting today. He asked a very, uh, important question about the cost and, uh, and the replacement cost, which was really key. It was, uh, like I said, once it's installed, uh, for pro, uh, you see there 1,0250, you know, for the two legs, 2,500 per intersection, um, that, that's the initial cost, the replacement of the actual light itself is not the majority of that cost. Uh, the actual light fixture was something around $300 or around that range. So, you know, once the pole is up and it's installed, that's the major expense.
John Winley here. I'd like to just chime in. Um, it was an awfully exciting meeting this morning. Uh, kudos to you BJ. All members of the street improvement special project committee, uh, really, uh, it was a quality dialogue. Cameron did awesome job with a good presentation and, you know, this is something that I'm really happy to see come to us. And I appreciate the expedited nature of wanting to get all of these beach accesses done before the summer hits. I think we were gonna see, uh, an immediate safety benefit for everyone who's in our town. So I, I'm very happy to support this and it's good to see it coming around.
Thank you.
Commissioner Terry Gray here. Uh, BJ, uh, hats off to you. It's a very good, uh, very good job. I like the fact of, uh, the, uh, uh, possible partnership with the businesses. I think that's a wise move. Um, it, uh, you know, uh, lets us be more of a community and I like that. Uh, this is a, uh, something that really needs to be done for the safety issue. And, and we've talked about that before. And, uh, from a safety aspect, this is a big, big win. Uh, and, uh, so hats off to you and your committee staff, Cameron Ray. Um, y'all did a great job. Uh, I'm all in on this. This is, this is good stuff.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Terry. This is great. Very exciting.
Yes.
Good job, BJ.
Yeah, great job by everybody. And, and it's something we've, we've all wanted to do for a while. And it's great to see that these probably cost a lot less than they did over 10 years ago too, because the technology's just gotten better and deeper and longer lasting. So a great time to jump in. Just so that we cover everybody's bases, I think, um, so my assumption is that the, um, partnership issue is kind of like a naming rights or a little plaque or something goes along with it that's tasteful, I, I would imagine.
Uh, we, we talked about that in our, in our committee meeting. Um, we talked about the possibility of putting something very minimal on there, uh, on the actual pole. There's very small, but, um, of course, there's, you know, some questions about that and changing hands of businesses and whatnot. So, you know, yes, it's a possibility, but, uh, you know, if it's necessary, but, um, we haven't really settled on that, um, putting any type of naming or anything like that on those poles.
Um, we recognize them publicly other ways.
Yes, we, oh, we would certainly recognize those, uh, those businesses and, and be sure to promote their, their, uh, assistance and, and getting this done. Let everybody know that they were, uh, key in, in helping that out. And, um, you know, not only is it consistent and it, you know, it's clean looking. I think it's going to, you know, if it saves one person, obviously it's well worth the investment. And, uh, you know, I think it, I think it has the potential to do that for sure. Over the course of the years, it saved at least one life. Um, so I think it's a great thing. And, and, you know, it's really just all of, you know, the hard work of planning put in and, and their vision and, and, and the committee, uh, just was, was real excited to, to do it. So, um, so I guess what I'm asking for is if we, I, it seems that we do, we have a consensus, um, to authorize staff to move forward with phase one, allocate that money that's there towards this project in phase one. And as soon as possible, have our board look at phase two and three in the upcoming budget cycles. Is that, is that our consensus, I guess? Thumbs up from everybody. Yeah, I figured it would be. So, uh, you know, you guys are all, uh, some of the most conscientious people I know. And I'm, I knew you would, uh, would be, uh, very excited about this. So, um, I told the committee the same. So I appreciate that.
Pretty work.
All right. I will pass it along. And, and Meredith and Cameron who worked on this, uh, they'll, they'll, uh, will begin to implement the progress, process this April, I think.
Yep, Cameron right here. Thank you, um, board mayor for, uh, for, for getting this going. We'll be sure to keep you in the loop as, as we progress towards, uh, getting phase one taken care of.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Meredith.
Are there any other committee reports that slipped my mind?
Mayor, I don't know if it's my connection or not. I, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Your volume is real low.
Same here.
I seem to have lost you altogether now.
Audio wise.
Oh, there you go. Oh, nope. Now I can't hear him either.
Hmm, not really.
God, well, I'm so sorry to hear that, uh, uh, in an unusual place. I don't know what I can do to make it better. We're getting close to the end of the meeting. I'll try to keep my voice up. Um, are there any other committee reports that I haven't thought of?
Nobody's gonna wanna follow BJ now. I'm thinking.
No. No.
I know, right? That's a good one. Uh, some, yeah, you see the post from the Coastal Times there.
Yeah. So sorry. We will, uh, continue to work on the technology here.
A little better.
Yeah, that's better.
All right, um, any commissioners have any agenda items they'd like to bring up this time?
Well, Ben, Mayor, I just wanted to mention quickly our meeting with, um, with Dave Halleck and the National Park Service. Uh, he, Ben, I'll just go ahead and do it since your audio is, if it's hard to hear. Yeah, so-
You'll do better than me.
We met, uh, with, um, Scott, who is the events coordinator, um, and, and education coordinator through the National Park Service, uh, along with, um, Superintendent Halleck. Last week, uh, we did a Zoom call and came up with a plan for potentially carrying the momentum that the fireworks received for the December 17th anniversary. And we'll be continuing to work with them, um, on that to come up with something to, um, to do, to, to work together on something again, since that was so well received in the community. So that's in the works and we'll keep you all posted on that.
Excellent.
See, see if there's a way Ivy that, uh, in your, uh, negotiations and planning, if there's a way we can help them with some sort of public address system or something, uh, they don't have anything outside that, uh, they can address any crowds or anything like that. And maybe there's some avenues we could help, uh, you know, with some grant programs or something that might be available.
A great idea. I know that was an issue with the, um, when they did the historical, I don't know if anyone, oh, I know BJ, I think you were there, um, when they had the, um, Hofstadter lighting, um, on the monument. And I know that was an issue. You're right, Terry. So that's a great idea.
And I would just say the evening, the evening aspect of it is really what kind of made it-
Yeah.
My mind, you know, I'm sure you guys have talked about that.
Yeah, we did talk about that and how, and I think Scott even mentioned too, like, just how that was great for, you know, work, especially, you know, and for kids too, for, for-
Right out. Yeah, everybody was excited. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good deal.
Yep, if you can hear me, the, um, you know, bringing the whole community together is a great part of it. Um, all under one, in one sight would be great. Civic pride is part of our history. It's just kind of a triple win. So, um, yeah, I think there's a lot of potential there. I've also reached out to some friends in the audio business. It may be that, you know, rental is the way to go or, you know, bring in a provider for an event. Um, uh, there may be people who will do that in kind or, or partially in kind. We'll see what we can do. But we're working all the avenues and, and hopefully have something more for you very, very soon.
Terrific.
So if there are no other commissioners' agenda, that was my mayor's agenda. Thank you, Ivy. Um, town manager, manager's agenda?
No, sir, not this evening. Thank you.
All, all right, Ms. Diaz, and, um, your, uh, town attorney agenda, sorry. Casey, anything?
Nothing for me, man.
All right. Well, then we're just gonna jump into the consent agenda. Ms. Diaz?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, items on the consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the January 27th, 2021 meeting, the December 2020 monthly reports, assistant firefighter grant for the purchase of P-25 compliant communication equipment. Approval of the consent agenda will authorize staff to apply for the AFG of approximately 300,000 with a required 5% matching fund or 15,000 being allocated in the, um, 2021 budget. Number four is budget amendments. The first is the, um, appropriate Corona relief funds or CRF. Number four is budget amendments. The first is the, um, appropriate coroner relief funds or C R F under the Federal Cares Act. And number two is to increase the rollout container sales association, associated expense due to increase in the demand for rollout containers. Excuse me. On the next page, we have, um, public hearings to be scheduled and there, there are three of these. Off-street parking and loading definition, um, add definitions for accessory dwelling unit and reduce minimum lot sizes to fifteen thousand square feet for duplex dwelling units. These, um, these three items would be recommended for public hearing for Monday, March the eighth at twenty twenty-one, I'm, I'm excuse me, twenty twenty-one at six P M. And, um, assuming that we will be again going Zoom, um, they would not be acted on that night, but would be acted on at the next meeting. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as submitted and a motion would be in order.
This is Ivy. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Terry Gray, second there.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, we will get to the other board members. Mr. McAvoy?
Yes.
And, and Mr. Winley?
Yes.
An affirmative from the mayor. We have a consent agenda as well. Thank you all. Well, we have one more opportunity for public comment. Um, I'll start off by apologizing for the audio. Sorry, it's hard to hear me. We will keep on working on making that better for everybody. And hopefully we'll work out when we can come back in person, when, uh, whenever the metric gets to the point we feel that's appropriate. At this point, is there anybody who's interested in making a public comment?
Mayor Sproul, no one has raised their hands.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, with no public comment, no need to respond. Uh, this has been pretty smooth and, uh, other than the audio. And, and thanks to everybody for the hard work. We're, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
John Winley here. I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right. A motion to adjourn from Mr. Winley. Do I hear a second?
A second to that motion.
A second from Mr. McAvoy. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
And Ms., uh, Ms. Ingram?
Yes.
All right. And affirmative for me. It's been a great meeting, a, a kind of a short one too. I don't, I don't, not wearing a watch. But, uh, thank, thank you, everybody. And I will, I will see you again soon. Uh, and I'll send you some pictures of the snow.
Yeah, very good. Have a good one, guys.
Take care, guys. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.